That's the cover in this meeting. Everyone, welcome back. Happy New Year. Hope everyone had a good holiday. All right, let's start with ordinance one, 2023. Mayor or Mr. Wilson or Mr. Ventura?
I'll start this because I initiated this a couple of years ago. I did let council know, and you guys may remember, we put our name in the hat for one of these. These trucks are made for commercial purposes only. They're not selling these trucks to the public. This is only for commercial purposes, which is what made this a little bit more attractive to us. I'm going to say this on the floor and I'll say this in here. As a son of a UAW worker, I'm skeptical of this. But in the same respect, I think we should try it because if this is something that may come in the future, I feel like this is our opportunity to try it. Everything that we've learned about these trucks are, I think, could be a good benefit to us. There's literally zero maintenance on these. I mean, there's not much maintenance at all, other than when the tires go bald, you got to replace them. So with the service guys utilizing the truck, and we did budget for this, going out and doing their day-to-day operations, I want to see how that works, how that manages with the no maintenance of the truck and utilizing those vehicles. That was the thought behind getting it.
Do we have a power station?
You don't need one. You do not need one. And next, I'll get into those questions in a second, but we sent Mr. Ventura, there was a two-day, I guess, seminar, would you call it? That he went to to learn about these trucks, and Mr. Ventura will tell you, he was a skeptic just like I am and will continue to be until this all gets figured out. But after he left there, I think he had a better feeling for what this is about and how it could benefit the department that he works in, so.
Plus, I just add to that, they required us to send somebody prior to being able to purchase it.
The biggest thing for me is it's American-made, intermade in Ohio. I mean, that's also a nice thing that I place value on.
Made in Oregon, yes.
Oregon, yes. I would ask that any questions you have, you would direct to Mr. Ventura because he's going to be able to answer them. I know there's a lot that I've already been asked, but he can answer any question you have about it.
And for anyone who doesn't know, Mr. Ventura is the mechanic in the service department. So he was chosen for this task.
If it's an electric vehicle, why it doesn't need a charger?
Well, it comes with a charger. It's a portable charger. So you can plug it in at any building location. So.
The charger goes into the electric outlet, and the truck plugs into that. Can you charge it at the stations at the commons?
Yes, you can charge to all the places.
That's the last place I want to see it, sitting in the middle of a commercial parking lot, getting plugged in.
But if the battery dies, I've heard batteries are extremely expensive.
Yes, they are. Again, Mr. Ventura, what is the lifespan?
What's the lifespan of the batteries?
The expectancy of the battery is eight years, and the warranty on the battery is eight years.
That's good. I have a friend who has an electric car. Don't get me started.
What's the, how far can you go on a battery charge?
Well, so just like your gas vehicle, you can go as, depending on how you're using it. So if you're going up mountains and using it, you're going to use a lot of gas, and you run out of gas quickly. The battery, same principle. So they never gave us a set mileage or timeframe. It gets what they call fifty-four miles per gallon, e-mile per gallons. How that relates to gas is what the federal government says. So this truck technically gets fifty-four miles per gallon based on EPA.
Okay. Yeah, because they've been talking about if your battery hits a hundred and fifty miles before you have to charge it.
Okay.
And that's what the cars are.
Yeah, and I think there's a federal minimum of a certain amount of mileage before you have to charge.
You can't drive it to Columbus.
Right. So it'll mainly, it'll be used as a light-duty truck within the city limits?
It is a 2500 vehicle, but because it's carrying a nineteen-hundred-pound battery in it, it is more low-rated for a 1500. But the towing factor is still that of a 2500.
Oh, okay.
The truck, I don't know if anybody's a car person, produces four thousand pound-feet of torque. It's insane. Your heavy engines in our trucks now are producing probably four hundred.
That's more than our fire trucks.
Wow.
It's pretty.
More than our land.
Does the record borrow this?
Very expensive.
That's off the mayor.
Are we going to see that truck pulling one of the bigger trucks out of a ditch somewhere?
If it can run up the road.
A big piece of this, too, is there's four motors, one on each wheel, and if one of those motors fails, the truck still moves. So it's kind of interesting in that respect as well.
Yeah, it's a unique design with electric cars. A lot of the electric vehicles out there still have a transmission and a transfer case and drive axles. And this system eliminates that. It puts the drive motors out at the wheels. So you have individual drive wheels.
Did you get to test drive it?
No.
Really? You went all the way to find the car?
I wanted to drive it.
I did.
And a big piece of this, too, is with the market right now, getting vehicles is very difficult. If this gets passed, we can literally pick this up, I think, tomorrow. Could we not?
Yeah, I don't.
I think they have it ready to go. We were picked, we threw our name in the hat, like I said, two years ago, and the vehicles aren't manufactured, and from what I understood, we can go get it, like, right away.
Yeah.
So they're there and ready to go, and it's a thing that we want to try.
One of their executives or administrative employees lives here in Macedonia.
Oh, that's cool.
Wish they got a third key.
Well, no one else has bought it, so we don't know what kind of a deal it is.
He'll deliver it free.
Yeah. Any other questions on this?
So the final cost is sixty-three? Plus sixteen hundred destination charges. So we're talking sixty-five thousand?
We're trying to eliminate the destination charge because it's only forty minutes away. And we're picking it up.
An electric vehicle, forty minutes is a long time.
And here's the piece of this, too, if you equate that to what we were using now, the Ram 2500, Rams are more expensive than that, but I don't know if it's an accurate comparison at this point.
No, it's kind of apples and oranges concurrence, but I will say this, all of our Ram trucks and fours that we're using are averaging about twelve miles per gallon. So, I mean, a fleet of these could save quite a bit on fueling, should they, I don't know how it's going to equate the electric costs for a city, but there's quite a bit of fuel going on with the current.
Well, the maintenance alone, I mean.
Yeah, I don't think.
Coil changes, time down.
Right. And I don't think that, you know, we should have an end-all-be-all replacement, but it should be a very good option for us.
So essentially, from the administration's standpoint, this is something we want to try. We want to at least get out there and see if this works for the department, and if it can save us money in some aspects, then that makes total sense to be cost-effective in that realm. So that's where we're at.
All right, so we don't need to go one, two, three on this. The mayor says we can pick it up kind of as soon as we pass it. It'll put off the pickup of it if we wait on it. So what would you folks prefer to do?
I might just point out that we did budget for this. This is not coming as some shock to anyone. It's not like we didn't, glad you know this was coming. It's a prior year PO, actually.
We've already had quite, we had a discussion, like you said, about two years ago about wanting to try this out.
Let's get it here. If it's available to us, you know, Monday morning, let's get it here.
I'm, I'm good with one, two, three. Mrs. Tully, do you have an opinion? I know you would obviously prefer not to.
Yeah. I always believe we should let the residents speak to how we spend the money. And this is sixty-five thousand, even though it's in the budget, for them, it's going to be what, and it's electric, and they'll probably have the exact same questions, or even more. And the person I know that has it might be able to tell you a little bit about them. He has a truck, but they have a car.
Well, I'm also fine with waiting till the next meeting. Perhaps we could do a two, three at the next meeting to get some resident input on this. Would everyone be okay with that, then? All right, excellent.
First reading over to you.
Yes, first read, please.
That's Mr. Tenley.
All right, to 2023, the public defenders.
I want to go now. You guys don't have any.
Thanks, John. You better get the plows ready.
And if you have any questions, I mean, if not, I'd be able to.
That's something else before you leave. Let them know the conversation is that a plow can be used on that truck also.
Can be, not optimally, but.
No, it can be used. That was one of the topics I brought up when I was up at the research and development center, and they said, hey, I'd go for it.
But I mean, it's going to drain the battery quicker, like you said. That's the equivalent of driving up a hill.
Yeah, I mean, if you can get a eight-hour day out of plowing in a parking lot or something.
Fantastic. Thanks, John.
Use them that much more.
Yeah, exactly. It'll move keeps. You just use it to move the things. All right, the public defenders, indigent persons. Is this a housekeeping thing? Is this something we do every year?
Yeah, something we do every year. So this is the county public defender's office. We'll cover any indigent defendant representation for someone who's been charged with the loss of liberty of defense. It's capped at one-seventy per case for the most part, and yeah, it's something you guys have done over here.
All right, any questions on this? Let's get this done, one, two, three, please. All right, the amendment to the Chagrin Valley engineering contracts, ordinance three. Mayor, do you want to talk about this?
So this was obviously an increase in cost with the COLA going up and increasing costs. We did our due diligence. We looked around at different communities, what other engineering firms were charging. It's obviously apparent that I'm happy with what Chagrin Valley is providing for us, and I think most of you are, too. But what they're asking for is not out of the realm of what everyone's going to, so it's just the increase in what their pay rates are. It's pretty consistent with what the increases are across the board in engineering firms.
That's why that basket of oranges was on my front door today.
And it's in, it's in the budget.
Yeah, it's in the budget. It's in the budget.
You already planned for the budget. I don't know, we all have to, we might have to go second obsession.
Have you reevaluated the condition of my street?
Yeah, he, he comes to us with this, this request and also the PCR, so I'm, I'm good. It's a good trick. All right, so one, two, three on that, so we can get that contract ready to go for the new year here. All right, ordinance four. Mayor or Mr. Veras, do you want to talk about this one?
Sure. So it's pretty apparent he wants to do a retire-rehire. It's never a popular thing, and there's always negative connotations that go around that, but what I can tell you is, in my tenure here, in fifteen years, I've had nine finance directors. I'm of the belief that this is probably the best one we've ever had. He's been consistent. He's been fairly good at what he does. It's a net zero to the cost of the city. It doesn't cost us anything. If anything, it cost him a little bit to do this, so it's of my opinion, I'd like to keep him around, and if he were to leave with the retirement, if you guys did not approve this, we would have a lot of cost to find a new finance director, which, again, nine finance directors in fifteen years. I'm pretty happy with where we're at today, and I'd like to move forward with that.
I'm in agreement with that. I think John's, John's been great for the city, so I hope that we can help him out with what he's asking for.
Not only that, is I think he's helped us understand more about, you know, what transpires, transpires in the city financially. I've learned a lot from him since he's been here.
Kind of like a mini-retirement party here, John. Anyone else have anything nice to say about John?
I'm going to start to cry.
I don't have anything nice to say. You know, I would add, you know, you may ask, why is this coming back from council? Because the retirement is a formal, complete separation of service from the municipality, so that's why the mayor had to reappoint. And you guys confirm that reappointment, but it is budget-neutral, obviously.
I would really like to do this, one, two, three, folks, to get him back.
Yeah, the schools will dumb those.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty typical. The public sector.
And she probably doesn't want to train another finance director, so we have to make that for Houston.
So be three on that. All right, the road project.
One, two, three. I'm serious, guys.
Wow, that was quick.
Wow, we've got the number-one complaint road down here.
Yes, yeah, totally.
Newport.
One, two, three for Newport.
I'll go down that road. I can't run the road. That's how bad it is. It's not just a car. Those people will be ecstatic.
Obviously, have our.
They'll get curbs and everything.
We'll have our report tonight, too, with Mr. Tullati showing the annual thing that we do every January, so you'll have that as well.
Yes, thank you for throw out last year's and put in this year's.
Correct.
This is perfect.
Fantastic, yes. Very exciting that Newport's in Elizabethan. That whole block is on there.
We're going to do Valley View, even though Mr. Copelance is at a stall.
Yeah, the, when we do those things, there's a bomb that's held for that anyway. I mean, we can't keep delaying that. You've driven it, you know. I think all of you have driven it, know that it's pretty dilapidated, so it's at a point where we have to fix it, but just know that if that construction begins, and they deteriorate that road or cause any damage to it, they are responsible for it, and we will hold their feet to the fire. Because it already happened. They already had something where something went in there and scraped up the road, and we made them go out there and fix it, so.
And in addition to the mayor's point, the schedule is also a function of the outside grant that the city receives, so that also dictated the schedule. In short, ODOT told us they want to pave it in the summer of two thousand and twenty-three, so if they're paying for it, we're not going to tell them no.
Ninety percent grant's pretty nice.
Yeah, you're going to do the whole thing.
From Twinford Road down to the Hudson City Limits, yes.
Is this the, is this the timeline we anticipated, or did they move it?
So I would say this is the timeline that we anticipated. When we apply, we ask, generally, we ask eight as soon as possible. We don't want to delay it. Since the road is in bad condition and they recognize it, they've moved us to the front of the schedule.
Great. Nice job. That's why we keep you.
Yeah. Good job, Jeff, to be here.
I'll point out, too, that we were going to pave it last year, and I'm glad we didn't because we wouldn't have got the grant for ninety percent, so that's, that's huge.
Fantastic. Great job, everyone. All right, the pavement markings on four eighty or round eight, any?
Round eight? Yeah, so this is a much smaller item, obviously. We discussed this at a council meeting earlier this fall. Next spring, ODOT will be doing some work on round eight up at the north end of the city, kind of near the intersection with Valley View. This is for the striping that'll take place in that area. Our share of the cost is twenty-nine hundred dollars. So this, this basically allows ODOT to move forward with bidding out their project so they can do the work spring of twenty-three.
All right, one, two, three on this. It's pretty benign. Number seven, the charter review commission. Has everyone spoken with the person that they hoped to put on the commission?
I have, and I have since learned that they are not eligible, and so I'm now working on a second person, and I'm not writing a person.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everyone else, can you give the information to Mark? Dave, were you able to find someone?
Uh, I was aware that I needed to look, but since I haven't been here for a while.
Wait a minute.
Stick this one.
But I, I can think of.
It was a bit sticky.
Okay.
I believe the requirement is they have to be an elector in the city, right?
Yeah. So it has to be someone over the age of eighteen that lives in the city.
Yeah, because if we didn't need eighteen, I would ask one of our residents who are in the student council. Is it? To be, but.
He is eighteen, and he's actually.
Are you eighteen?
And he's actually been.
Are you registered? He's actually mine.
There you go. There's your person.
He's my nomination.
I didn't have one, or I would have done it.
Congratulations.
Okay, so in this case, there's also a spot on the ordinance for the council representative, yes? We don't have to vote on that. We can all just decide, yes?
You'll eventually amend the legislation, so I'm assuming you have a first read tonight. You also made the nominations for the next meeting. I can enter those into it, and then at the next meeting, you can move to amend the legislation to also include whoever the council nominee is. Now, you'll have to discuss that in either a work session or the actual meeting.
Let us discuss at this moment. If anyone likes to do the charter review commission, I would like, I would like to nominate Mr. Garvis to do it.
I'll second it.
I've already been on it.
Yeah, I've already done it.
That's why I don't want to do it.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to do it.
I'd like for Jeff to do it. I think he'd be good. It takes, it takes a lot of time, and, you know, you have to be at one to two meetings a month, if not more, because there is a time limit on it, so I think Jeff would be pretty good.
Certain periods more frequently.
I think one would be really solid.
We can sit on it, though.
You're, it's open to the public. Absolutely.
We're putting, not putting the names out.
Yes, so.
Opens the public up to the commission who they want to solicit input from, though.
Yes, yes. So you can, as a councilperson, also let the commission know, I've got some ideas of charter issues that I want to speak about. And I know that when I was, when I did it, we spoke to Mr. Molnar, who was council president at the time. We spoke to Mr. Ventura, who was just a council member. We spoke to the mayor, and I think maybe some other city representatives. So you can go to them and say, I'd like to present, speak.
Always.
Okay, so, yeah, get, get your names. You can submit them to Mark, and then, so we can do a first read on this, yeah? And then, do you need their address and their email address, or?
Not for the legislation, but for.
For contacting, you need their home address.
I gave them names, phone number, and email.
Yeah, because we'll reach out to them. The department will send a letter kind of outlining the duties, responsibilities.
Make sure, change your mind.
General procedural items, yeah. And I'm obviously be able to discuss with them as well if they have questions.
All right.
Do you come to any of them?
I believe I came to the first one, and then.
He costs money when he comes. We didn't invite him to everyone.
And then, as requested, yeah.
The city budget is much different now than it was five years ago, so.
Makes sense.
But he's always there to, you know, answer questions.
Yeah.
Probably text them. I think I might have texted him or called him during the meeting last time, so. All right, so we're all set on that. Everyone will get their names in. Okay, ordinance eight, employee benefits.
So essentially, this is the benefits that were negotiated through the fire contract. We are extending, like we always do, this is not anything out of the ordinary, to the non-bargaining employees. So the things that were in there, it's pretty specific in there. It's the week buyback of vacation. That's the Juneteenth, and it's the college degree.
Education payment.
Be careful of that. So it's essentially those things. It's extending the benefits to them as well, which.
Is that a reimbursement, or is that just outright?
It's a benefit if you have a degree or you earn a degree that's related to your job. It's a one-time payment. We're trying to encourage higher education. It's never going to be a bad thing, so that's why that, that came through.
And trying to make clear in the legislation, it doesn't stack on top, so if you have associates to get that, then if you get a bachelor's, you only get the difference between the two. You don't get a full payment for what it says for the bachelor's. If that makes sense.
But key, key thing, one time.
Right.
One time.
And you don't get the money till you show successful completion. It's in the ordinance.
Right.
And if you're a new employee, you have to wait a year. That's also a part of that, if that makes any sense.
OC, so.
That was me.
Any reason to not do one, two, three on this? This is, you know, related to HR.
Well, I'll point out that we already did this for the bargaining unit. We did that in the one, two, three. This is no different, so we've already communicated to the non-bargaining folks that this was forthcoming, so it'd be nice to get that.
This is typical that we do after contracts, so I'd like to propose one, two, three on that, if we could.
I'm good.
All right. Mayor, did you have something else you wanted to talk about?
I can talk for days. Where do you want to go?
Mrs. Tully has something that she'd like to, I thought she said you had something you wanted to talk about at this meeting, or?
Executive.
Executive.
Well, the motion, you have another motion here, too.
Okay, there's a motion here for plastic process.
But you also need to add to that.
You'll make the same exact motion, but also for the fire department.
Same, another twelve hundred.
Wow. Can he just say Macedonia Police Department and also the Macedonia Fire?
It'd probably be cleaner to do a two motions.
All right, so.
Always me.
Twice.
Just poke me.
All right, Jan, if you want to.
But before we get into my issue, we need to go back and talk about the election of council officers. That's tonight, too.
Yes. I was hoping that nomination, we'll do, make sure we do nominations on the floor. I would like to let everyone know that I would like to continue to do Parks and Recreation, and I'm also open to the idea of being president again, to feel like, feels like a year goes by very quickly, so it'd be nice to have, feels like two years is more like a term. so it'd be nice to have, feels like two years is more like a term. So I'd be open to that nomination, and I, I also, uh, have enjoyed working with Mr. Garvis, so I'm gonna nominate him to be vice president.
You know, that could be something that could be brought up to the charter review, as you can add to the charter, that the term of president of councils for two years. Seriously.
Yeah.
The issue's off the table.
You guys are free to create your own rule for that as well, if you wanted.
Do you, do you really want to do that? You and I have been through some things where that would not be conducive.
Yeah.
If you recall.
If you do a good job, you can get. If you do a good enough job, you can get elected.
And it would have meant at the end of two, we were going a different direction.
Yeah.
I'd like to be reappointed, this is the year we come back on the cemetery board, so.
I would like to take some pressure off of Mr. Garvis and, uh, be the chairman of the finance committee.
Okay.
And stay on the JED.
But just for tonight's, to be prudent here, it's only, we're only gonna have vice president, president, finance, and parks and rec. We don't do anything else. The rest of those, you guys do separately.
JED, you're on there, yeah, that's the mayor's appointment, and we do separate legislation for JED, so.
And what about finance committee, no?
Fine, we do president, vice president, finance, parks and rec. Outside of that, the other ones, remember, we always have that sheet where you guys can figure out, the committees that are somewhat.
Yeah, those will probably stay the same, I mean, they have.
That's up to you guys.
Well, Jeff, you're on the JED with Vinnie.
I am.
Dave, will you have time to take over the JED? What's, what's, what's the meeting schedule like with that?
Well, first one, I, I have, I, I will put out tonight, I got all the information this time written.
Would you be interested in that, Dave?
Yeah, they haven't been consistent, shall we say.
No, well, there is no consistency today. The mandatory one immediately.
There used to be.
By rule, it has to occur once every year.
Right.
So the next one is coming up next week.
Correct.
Probably will not.
Be another one for this year?
Be another one, right, so you have some timed up, deliberate, conjugated.
It used to be.
If Mr. Finley's interested, and we're open to doing that appointment tonight, I'm okay with that.
Well, if it's next week, I can't do it.
Yeah.
I can take it thereafter, but next week is.
Is there?
I was just talking about next year.
Is there, um, you know, uh, other appointments that we have that were already from last year that no one wants to change? Is everyone good with their appointments from last year?
John, come find the committee list and get that out to us, and then we can talk about it. You have the committee list from last year?
I got it.
Vinnie's got it. Um, is there any, do you guys just want to stay on the same committees that we?
Yeah, we stayed on the same committee list as we did for twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, we didn't change.
We didn't change a thing.
Of course, we didn't have any committee meetings in twenty-twenty-one, that's why.
And that was something I was gonna ask, and I think I've asked it before. What is the purpose of all of these committees when they never meet? And there's virtually out of our hands, so to speak, to what we can talk about and what's left to the administration of the department has.
They've been assembled in the past when things come up where it makes sense to bring them together, and I've been a part of it where, like, the road is an example, when we had no money for roads, and the roads were in horrible shape, we had the roads and safety.
We met, uh, weren't you part of the safety committee?
I called that safety committee meeting, and it went absolutely nowhere in as fast as it possibly could.
I think it, it, it shed some lights on.
I have other ideas as far as that goes, but I don't know how far it's gonna go then, either.
Well, you can call a meeting if you're on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if anyone has any strong feelings towards what committees they're on, you know, you're gonna, we can change.
John can update the list to change the JED and the finance committee and get that out there. Everybody can take a look at it.
All right.
I'll be, I'll be more than happy to nominate you on the floor.
Thank you. All right, you wanna talk about the?
Real quick, we had the, um, historical society of Old Northfield was here. I met with them, um, not everyone may be aware, but Macedonia Northfield, Center Northfield, Village and Sagamore started as Old Northfield, and it was one community. I haven't got through the history yet to find out why the heck did we all break off? I've never understood that.
Five times.
What they were looking for is a couple of things. Um, one is if we could post on our website their meetings, because they welcome anybody to come and listen, provide, and it's also a way to get them out there. Nobody knows they exist, really.
You have, do you have access to the calendar on the website? So they can email John with.
Okay, I just needed to tell them who.
Yeah, date and time.
And then the other request they had is if on the monthly letter that you put together, if there's a way they could have space, just to write something historical.
It's only quarterly, isn't it?
Yeah, it's quarterly.
Yeah, it's quarterly.
To talk about their society, but also what it is they do at the Palmer House.
So Diana coordinates that, so.
Okay, so I will let her know. Diana's the newsletter.
Yeah, and, I mean, she'll, she'll run it by the mayor, but, but I'm fine with doing that.
But they're very excited to be able to do that, because it is interesting. Nobody really knows they exist, nobody goes to Palmer House unless you suddenly drive by. Kinda like the one I always bring up in Streets, probably. Wow, and that there were four single-room elementary schools or schools. They're all homes now. The one on Ledge Road used to be a school. It was like, what, what?
Do they have the ability to have representatives from each of us on, on, on their board or on their committees?
We haven't gone that far yet. Well, that's a, it's a, it's a nonprofit board.
Okay.
So it's kind of like the cemetery where we have representatives, but this has been run totally, it's more not like the cemetery. It's more like the manor house. If you're on the manor house committee.
With the work that you've done on this already, and if that's potentially there, I think you'd be great to be part of that.
I would love to, and I've told them I'm gonna keep in touch with them and keep working with them. They also provide.
It is a nonprofit that governs itself, so.
They have.
Well, I'm not saying we're gonna govern it, but now you've got a lay is on a speaker that can bring back things to us and back to them, I mean.
Well, one of the things I asked them for, because I said, we haven't decided to make a donation yet, but I said, tell me what's on your capital improvement list. And they did that. Then I, they gave me a copy of their budget, they gave me a copy of their income, which is like eight hundred bucks for membership. And right now, the only thing they do is with the third grade from Northfield Elementary, which is the building next to Palmer House. So they've investigated, expanding it, and I said, why aren't you having every grade over here to show them the history? And this is the guy, um, I did make copies, I'm gonna leave this with John so he can make copies. They created this, and Rich, who's on the board, paid for it out of his pocket. And it tells the history. What's interesting, too, is one of the things they do is they go in and they tell, like, on this tour, everything in the house. In the middle, then, when the teacher takes them back to school, they have these that they cut out, and you have to answer the costumes. So it's really very clever, but I asked, why don't we have high school kids in here? Why don't we have middle school kids in here? And the schools gave an answer, which I won't repeat, because it was like, no, that's not true. And then they have this one that they pass out to adults. This is the third grade tour. A lot of the same information, but even more detailed. So when I asked them, any money they got, you know, we looked at five hundred dollars, that's, you know, the list they have, but things they do, they, they need doors, believe it or not. They, they have some of the similar problems that we have with the manor house. Can't go upstairs, same as the manor house, too skinny and not handicap accessible. So they have it upstairs, but you can't go up to the top of the Palmer House. So what I'm asking for is we consider a donation from us, from the city, either five or a thousand. They would fall off their chair if we gave them a thousand bucks, but they'll take anything because they're not funded, they're purely nonprofit. Yes, they file every year, because I said, can I help you if you're high school?
Were you able to get any information about what kind of data they collect, or what kind of data they produce, or what kind of educational materials they, they provide outside of that?
Yes, I don't.
Right.
I think what, um, you guys were gonna explore was the, you know, the linkage to Macedonia and what they have from Macedonia.
And that's where I said we need to, that's one of the reasons why they'd like to be in our newsletter, to get the information out. I also said we could talk, um, it's no longer cable line, the problem is, nobody gets the channel that cable lines on.
Community focus, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of sad, but that would be another way. I also said we could hook back up with Ed, who now works for Acne Pecan instead of the newsletter, and maybe get him involved in getting some things out. Because I don't even get the newsletter anymore.
It's one thing to advertise.
I got one on my driveway today.
I never do.
It's one thing to advertise for, but what, what, what are we advertising? What are they, are they just giving tours of a house that existed? Or are they able to, you know, if, if I have a question about, you know, when was my neighborhood built? Or tell me more about Johnson Manor, stuff like that, are, are they able to answer those questions?
Yeah, we were gonna have a very short meeting, and two and a half hours later, we were still tied. That's why I brought up the fact they told me about, did you know that there are, you know, the single-room schoolhouses? And four of them still exist, I go, there's one on, if you go across Royal Highland and hang a log, is that only?
Nineteen oh three.
Wow.
The brown with orange or yellow shutters?
Circle house?
That was one.
It was one of those schools?
And then the house on ledge, almost at the top of the hill on the right-hand side, it's single-story, but they put an addition on it, that's another one. And I'm like, didn't know that.
There's also one on Twinburg Road, just rest of the tracks on the south side.
Yep. So they want to give more of the history out. And I told them, even then, I'm looking for the pictures I have when Nixon came, because they talk about that, when Nixon came to town to give.
Yeah, so that, that kind of stuff, I think, is valuable from, from people like you that have lived here, you know, their whole life. Because that was a very trans, you know, the, between the eighties and nineties, that was like a huge transition in the city. So to hear from people who lived here before and watched that transition, you know, we don't always have to talk about the turn of the century. We can talk about, you know, the turn of the decades.
Turkey, there is now Macedonia, comments.
Yeah, that was my, my neighborhood.
My sister's girlfriend's house, that was right here, and now it's gone, because that's for two seventy-one, so, yeah.
You talking about that?
Mine was allegedly a potato farm, my neighborhood.
Yeah.
Did you know that?
So, your website?
No, I, it's on, I put that on our website, I have pictures, the actual pictures when Nixon visited.
Yeah, I have a picture, because I was standing out in front of the Blue Willow, where it used to be.
The irony of what I discovered with that.
The Blue Willow used to be somewhere else.
Oh, yeah.
The car, the car that he was in.
Across eighty-two.
It was at Royal Highland? It was like right here.
With the post office and Dr. Holt in the Blue Willow.
The limo that he drove through Macedonia was the same one that Kennedy was shot in.
Well, I'd also, I'd like to get them, um, they haven't really hooked up, but hook up with Kurt Bobinger. He's lived for her eighty, some years.
Yeah.
There's, there's.
Parents were here. That's the kind of stuff that I'd like to hope, to encourage them to do with, with our donation. You know, yeah, we, we want them to be able to keep the Palmer House running, but we really do need someone to, to do the work to, to do Macedonia history, that's the kind of stuff.
Well, and they're very agreeable to that. When I said, could I continue? The other thing I said, um, with the lobby condition, because the school still owns the house, and they leased it to them for a buck. I said, what were they gonna do with it? He goes, we don't know. So we went up, and that house was actually moved, because it was further, if you, once you read that, it talks about the house and how it got there. But it's interesting to hear the first level, it's from the eighteen hundreds. I've gone through some of Chuck Loparle's pictures, that his daughter gave me, all his albums. And I have the pictures where Sears doesn't exist, it's still just.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And I didn't move to Crowe, because that's where I used to catch frogs for science class.
Tim Black said that's where he used to rise for wheelers.
So what I'd like to propose is that we make it a proposition and motion tonight to donate them, if you want to do it tonight, or we do it at the next meeting. Think about how much money.
I definitely want to wait a meeting. I know we did talk about the proposition, and now we've just got some more information. If we can talk more about it, we can also independently reach out to them if you want, but let's do something.
Rich will be glad to come on a heartbreak. She was here.
Yeah.
And Rich was, if you look in there, he's in a picture dressed up as somebody.
Oh, really?
So he's really gotten into it, and it's like, wow.
Yeah, so this is actually something I think that the community can weigh in on, too, if anyone, you know, wants to talk about.
If you want, um, I can also have John copy their, their budget, their expenditures.
Yeah, it'd be nice, John, if you could.
Here, pass this down to you, you can see Rich's face.
And email us this PDF, so they're gonna need to make printouts, and then.
That way everybody has what I got.
Take a copy of that, look at the PDF, that's, it's, I'll give you, you can learn more about that.
Thank you.
Let's go, thank you very much for doing that, Jan, that sounds very thorough.
We had breakfast at Luminos.
Hey, they had to twist your arm, huh?
That's a little nuts.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain O'Brien, always appreciated. All right, we have approval of the minutes.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes in the Thursday, December eighth, twenty twenty-two regular council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
All right, then we'll do our annual election of officers. This is every first meeting of the year, we elect President, Vice President, Finance, and Parks and Recreation. So I will open it up with nominations for the President.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Consular Brandt for the position of President.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Ms. Brandt being President?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Looking forward to working with you again. Next, we will have nominations open up for Vice President.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Jeff Garvis for the position of Council Vice President.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Mr. Garvis?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, I guess I wasn't right, you have two, right? Did you vote?
I kind of voted aye.
Well, congratulations.
Didn't come out very clearly, thank you.
Okay, next is the Finance Chair. Any nominations, or nominations for the Finance Chair?
I'd like to nominate Consular Ventura for the position of Finance Chair.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, Council.
And last but not least, the Parks and Recreation Board, any nominations?
I nominate Consular Jessica Brandt.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, those all in favor of Ms. Brandt?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. This is how many years in a row?
Six.
You may have set a record here.
I enjoy, I enjoy working with Mr. Charlie.
She's got a way to go to set the record.
Yeah, so you probably have that one tied down.
Sorry, I haven't started a new soccer program.
She was still in high school, sorry.
Were there any votes in opposition to the last?
I did not hear any votes in opposition, but we can go back and ask those if you want.
I did not.
All right, then we will move into public comments. Seeing the large crowd we have tonight, I would assume we have none.
Correct.
Then correspondence from the clerk?
None, sir.
We'll move right into pending our new legislation, starting with ordinance number one.
I moved author ordinance number one, twenty twenty-three, for its first reading by title only.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lordstown EV Corporation for the purchase of a twenty twenty-three endurance CC one L pickup truck for the City Service Department without the necessity of advertisement and formal bidding.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit about this, because this is something that in our work session, Mrs. Tully alluded to the fact that she wanted input from the public. So where this was born from is about two years ago, they put something out to all the municipalities about these vehicles. It's basically the Lordstown EV Corporation where they're making trucks for commercial applications. These are not trucks that are made for anything other than a commercial application. We threw our name in the hat to see if this is something we'd be interested in. Within that time of recently, the trucks are prepared, they're ready to go, we budgeted for it. We had one of our, we had one of our mechanics go out to Detroit to learn about the truck and how it functions and how it could be an asset to the city of Macedonia. If I'm being very, very clear about this, I'm the son of a UAW worker. Cars are very near and dear to my heart. I love them, I love everything about them. Anything with a motor excites me. So I'm a, I'm a pretty big skeptic of this. But what we are saying here is we want to try one of them to see if it works. We are not saying that in the future, we're gonna replace every truck that we have in the service fleet and have electric trucks, because I don't think that that's feasible. I know that it will not work for all applications that we have currently. But what I am saying is it may make sense when these gentlemen are out and they're working, and I say gentlemen, because there's only gentlemen within that department. They're out working and they're going to different jobs. There's zero maintenance on these trucks. So if they're just driving to jobs and throwing things in the back of the truck, it may be conducive to the operation. Additionally, there's literally zero maintenance. Our own mechanic said, there's zero maintenance. That resonates with me. So that's something that I think, just in terms of transporting employees to jobs and the equipment in the back of the truck, that may make sense for us.
You mentioned your seminar.
Yeah, the seminar he went to was for two days. So there was a myriad of different things he learned about, and he was a skeptic going into it. And Mr. Ventura is a car guy like me, we're very passionate about our vehicles, and he was a huge skeptic going into it. When he walked out, he had bought into it. So that's when I knew that that was something I wanted to bring to council to say, look, I think this is something we should try moving forward. Not saying it's gonna do anything, we don't know, but we should test it. So it's what we're gonna do moving forward. If you have input about this, I would encourage you to email Mr. Hoover, as Mrs. Tully asked for in the work session, so. But I think it's something we should try. It's starting with one. The cost is around the same cost of a truck that we're buying now, so we want to test it. We want to see if it's cost prohibitive or cost, what's the word I'm looking at? Effective for what we're doing. We don't have that answer, I don't really know, but we want to find out. And this is the way to start doing that. So if this gets passed at some point in the near future, I think the truck is ready to go almost immediately. We can pick it up almost immediately. So I believe we will be one of the first municipalities to have it and test it and try it. But it has all the capabilities, like I said before, plowing and towing and all that. But just like a gas vehicle, the more you do with it, the less miles you're gonna get out of it. So if you're towing something or you're plowing with it, you're not gonna get as many miles out of it with the charge. The charge, the batteries are set to last eight years. The batteries are guaranteed for eight years. There's literally four motors, one on each wheel for this truck, so we'll be talking more about that here in the next meeting, and hopefully we can move that forward. And look for your input if you have any. All right, I think I've said enough on that one. Ordinance number two.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance two, twenty twenty-three, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Summit County Public Defenders Commission for the representation of indigenous persons charged with violations of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia.
Mr. Guddey?
Sure, this is largely a housekeeping item. For any defendant who's declared indigenous, who faces a loss of liberty offense, this would have the Public Defenders Office providing legal representation to them within the city's jurisdiction. The max, general max cap is a hundred and seventy dollars per case.
Essentially, this is housekeeping as well, correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, one is your pleasure.
I would move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance two, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance two carries. Ordinance number three.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number three, twenty twenty-three, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending the agreement between the city of Macedonia and Chagrin Valley Engineering Limited relative to compensation for engineering services provided to the city by the city engineer.
So essentially, Chagrin Valley had approached me and they talked about the costs going up in the world. As with everything we're doing and anything you do in your personal lives, you know that the cost goes up. We did some research on this, not only with other firms, but other firms that Chagrin Valley actually works with, to see what they were charging them, to make sure that we were in line with that. And this is not something that's uncommon. It's in line with all the increases that we see in the realm of engineering at this point. So we feel that this is conducive for us. And not only that, Chagrin Valley has done a pretty darn good job for us, and we appreciate that. And one shining example's coming up here in our legislation today, where we got a ninety percent grant for two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars to pave the remainder of Valley View Road. So it further shows that they're having value there, and that's why I don't look to make a change right now, and I ask council to support this. Any further discussion? Hearing none, one is your pleasure.
I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number three, twenty twenty-three, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number three carries. Ordinance number four.
I move to, we have a first, second, and third reading on ordinance number four, twenty twenty-three, by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance confirming the reappointment of John M. Vares as the Director of Finance for the city of Macedonia, Ohio.
So I have to be redundant. In the work session, I talked about this fairly extensively, but in my tenure here, being an elected person in Macedonia, fifteen years, I've had nine finance directors. Nine, I'm not exaggerating. I believe that Mr. Vares has been the best that we've had. He's put us back on track. When I started, our annual carryover was sixty thousand dollars. We are far from that today. We are in a realm where we actually could get things done, and I believe a lot of that's attributed to his ability to look at the numbers and try and craft things. And one simple thing that we failed in the past on is a five-year plan, where his five-year plans are working for us. We have a plan in place where everything we do, everything we're gonna purchase, and it works flawlessly. So essentially what he's asking to do here, and I know this is something that can cause consternation out there, but I want to put everyone's minds at ease. It's a retire, rehire, but it's budget neutral to the city. There would be a cost associated if this didn't pass for me to go out and find another finance director, and I'm not looking for my tenth finance director. I'd like to stay on number nine. It seems to be a lucky number for us. So he's done an excellent job for us, and I can only ask council again to support me in keeping Mr. Vares here with us. Any further discussion? Hearing none, one is your pleasure.
I move to adopt ordinance number four, twenty twenty-three, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance four carries. Welcome to the team again, Mr. Vares.
Thank you, thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
Resolution number five.
I move to offer ordinance number five, twenty twenty-three, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The resolution authorizing the city engineer to prepare plans, bids, and specifications, and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for various roadway improvement projects for the twenty twenty-three road improvement program.
Director Jalati.
Yeah, we had a brief discussion in the work session. Historically, we do read the list of names of the roads that are scheduled to be paid for this year into the record, so I guess let's do it, huh? So this year, Janes Lane, South Melody, Fairlane, Newport, Elizabeth, Crestline, Merline, Arkdale, just at the south end, Lancewood, and River Run.
Do you just want to do your report now while we're at it, because it's kind of conducive to what, where they're gonna vote on as well?
If you'd like me to, we can do it now, or we can do it for.
Let's get it done.
Here we go. All right, I'm up. All right, thank you, Kyle. Go ahead for the next slide. Oh, we re-formatted it a little bit. So anyways, this is our annual State of the Roads PowerPoint presentation, I like to call it, as you guys are well aware. We've done this in the past, so it's very similar format to what you've seen in the past, but just with updated data. So pavement condition rating system, I won't go deep into the details. Basically, it's a system that ODOT creates and provides to local municipalities to provide some uniformity to what we do. Roads get graded on a scale of zero to a hundred, a hundred being the best. Next slide, please, Kyle. So here you can see the color coding and the grading scale that we use. Dark blue is very good, red is very bad. And you see where they all fall in between, just like a rainbow. Next, please, Kyle. So here, this is my favorite slide. We always go back to May of two thousand and fifteen, that's kind of where we began this road program journey. It's also the first time the city ever had a citywide pavement condition rating report done. At that time, the average rating was seventy-three point two. You can see where we stand today, that's eighty-five point two. So we've gone up twelve points, which is fantastic, to be totally honest with you. We should all be very proud of that, so. Next, please, Kyle. Here's our pie graph to show you. On the left, in two thousand and fifteen, you can see we had a small sliver in the dark blue, and then a pretty even distribution. We even had some orange and red. Orange and red is very bad. Nobody wants to drive on that. On the right, you see what we have today, almost half the town in the dark blue, so we're very happy to see that. No red, only one sliver and orange. Yeah, it's one road, and as we mentioned earlier, that's Valley View Road down there, south of Twinsburg. That is the one road that lands in orange, which, as we know, will be paved this summer by ODOT. So we're happy to announce that. Next, please, Kyle. And here's the map of the city with the same color coding. It's a little hard to see from a distance on the TV. But if you have the paper copy in front of you, you'll see that on the left, there's a fair amount of red and orange, not a whole lot of dark blue. On the right-hand side, the red is gone, the orange is pretty much gone, and we have a lot of dark blue. So if you want to find your road, you can find it on that map. Next, please, Kyle. And then here's our dollar amounts. You can see what we spent on the road program each year from two thousand and fifteen up to present. And total, twenty-eight point three miles of road have been paved in the city since two thousand and fifteen. To put that into context, we have sixty-six total miles of road in the city, so getting close to half the city. And I believe that's all we have. Correct, Kyle? Thank you.
I'd also point out that in these seven years prior to that, we didn't have a budget for interior roads at all. We kind of shot in the dark when we would hope to get some cash to put some monies towards roads. So we're over seventy roads, I believe we've paved in the past seven years.
Seventy-five.
So seventy-five roads in a ten-square-mile town, that says a lot. So we've done a lot to put those dollars to work that the residents had bequeathed to us to pave roads, and we definitely appreciate and thank the voters for passing that levy that allows us to take care of business. So thank you for that. Any further discussion?
Thank you for Newport, and then your Merline, we're doing the entire Merline, right from.
Correct.
It goes from Newport to Elizabeth, because it's rated two different ways, which is weird, but.
Correct, all of Merline.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, though. The people on Newport, it's better late than never, Higahouse. And you want to tell them about the curbs?
Oh, yeah. So one side note, on Newport, the entire concrete curb on both sides of the road will also be replaced. We do that from time to time on certain roads when it's necessary, it is here. So during parts of the construction, the road will be down to one lane or one direction. We'll coordinate that with all the affected residents and parties while in advance.
And also important is River Run, because that's another road that has deteriorated very quickly. We have the freeze and thaw where that road has heaved, and it gets really, really bad. I believe there's some base issues in there from when it was originally constructed. So happy to say that that road, I'm happy they're all getting paved. The most complaints that we heard were Newport and River Run, and obviously they're high on the list, and we're gonna take care of business on them, so thank you for that. All right, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number five, twenty twenty-three, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution number five carries. Resolution number six.
I'd like to offer resolution six, twenty twenty-three, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A final resolution requesting the Director of Transportation to proceed with the installation of certain paved markings along State Route Eight for Project D zero four PM RWR FY twenty twenty-three dash PID number one one five three seven five relative to a portion of State Route Eight located within the city of Macedonia.
Director Jalati.
Yeah, this legislation is to allow ODOT to proceed with their public bidding and then go forward with this work on Route Eight next spring. This is to paint the lines on Route Eight up at the north end of town. Our share of the. the lines on Route Eight up at the north end of town. Uh, our sh- uh, share of the cost of the project is $2,900.
Well, that's an exciting piece of legislation. Thank you.
Would you like me to keep talking?
Yes. Any further discussion?
On the budget.
Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I'd like, uh, to pass and post according to law, ordinance six, 2023.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution number six carries. Resolution number seven.
I'd like to offer resolution number seven for its first reading by title only, please.
A resolution confirming the appointments to the Charter Review Commission.
Director Ghadetti, can you give us a little synopsis of what this is about, please?
Sure. So the charter requires that the Charter Review Commission be assembled at least once every five years. At least once every five years. Uh, the last Charter Review Commission was assembled in 2018. It was assembled a little bit early, but this is the five-year period. Um, so this legislation will actually assemble, uh, the commission. They'll meet periodically. The general goal is to make any recommendations for charter amendments to council within enough time to submit it to the Board of Elections for the November election.
Thank you. Ordinance number eight.
I move to offer ordinance number eight, 2023, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending sections 161 dot 1 to B2, 161 dot 13A1, and 161 dot 15G of the codified ordinances of the City of Macedonia relative to certain employee benefits.
So essentially, this legislation mirrors what the bargaining units got in terms of, uh, some of the benefits that were extended to the fire, um, contract that we had passed. So we extend that to the non-bargaining unit and that's why we have this before us today because that's traditionally what we have done. It's no different in the past of, of anything that we've passed before. So extending that benefit to the non-bargaining units. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I'd like to offer ordinance eight, 2023, and adopt it and post it according to law.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number eight carries. Are there any other motions or legislative actions?
Yes, mayor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation from Plastic Process Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $1,200 to be utilized by the Macedonia Police Department for certain law enforcement purposes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other motions?
Yes, mayor. I'd like to offer another motion to accept a donation from Plastic Process Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $1,200 to be utilized by the Macedonia Fire Department, uh, for certain, uh, equipment and, and, uh, work usage.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you to Plastic Process Equipment. I know our safety forces definitely appreciate the donation and we appreciate you having a business in our community and having that faith in our safety forces to give that type of donation. So can't thank them enough for that. All right, next up is the mayor's report. Uh, the 2022 December revenue for Mayor's court was $40,712.79. I don't have a whole lot to talk today about because it's the new year and we are heavy in negotiations, which absorbs a great deal of my time, but I do want to say that our Winter Fest was amazing and I want to thank our service staff. I want to thank our Parks and Recreation staff and all the other fire and police that were there because that was an amazing event and I hate to say this, but it was my favorite so far. And I think seeing the, the, the joy in the kids' faces when they, they saw Santa come on a, a carriage with horse drawn, I mean, it was awesome. And it just, it made my, uh, it made my holidays very special. So thank you for that and all you do with that. And I know that there's more coming with that in the future. So awesome event. Uh, I also point out there's a lot of construction going on in town right now. Um, the Wave Car Wash is in process. Don Bash Jewelers and Optima, they're very close. Uh, Optima, I believe, will be in there and functioning by February, I'm told. So that's a, sorry, Bob, if I'm stealing some of your thunder from your report, but...
Have they just put the invite out?
Yeah. I'm kind of, uh, excited to see that finally done and that's a great thing and a great benefit to our community. And I talked about this with my community focus interview, but it, if you have to unfortunately ever see a dermatologist, they're very, very hard to get to. I had to go see a dermatologist, so I called them up and their temporary location, I got in within a week. So anywhere else, you've tried, anywhere else, I mean, you're talking six months at best. So it's a very difficult thing, but we're going to have it in our town and if God forbid you need it, it's there and they're great people and I can't recommend them more highly. From my experience I'd have with them. So they're pretty awesome. And last but not least, please don't drive distracted. Put the phones down and drive the cars and stay out of the passing lane unless you're passing. I'm adding that one this year because that's one that sticks when I crawl.
And does that mean I have to use my turn signal?
Uh, yeah, that little lever is for letting people know which way you're going to. But we'll talk about that.
Is the truck coming with one?
It doesn't have to be a secret. You can let people know your turn is.
Okay, we'll move on to committee reports.
Uh, Parks and Rec Commission will have our first meeting of the year on January, Wednesday, January 18th at 6 o'clock in the Activity Room at the Rec Center. We'll be, um, voting on, uh, chairpeople for the group and we'll be doing that right away. And then we'll also be, uh, as usual, open for public comment. So if anyone would, uh, like to come to the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, we'll be there Wednesday, uh, at 6 o'clock. That's all.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Yes, uh, mayor. Uh, the JED Board will be meeting on January 23rd at 6:00 PM right here in the council chambers. It will be the first, uh, meeting of the year, which is required by law. It is an open meeting. There has been no agenda set yet at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing none. We'll go right to the department reports, starting with Director Wilson.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, we, uh, been busy taking down Christmas lights. They, they, uh, obvi- you know, we did a great job. They were beautiful. Now get them, get rid of them. Uh, so, so we got them all down, uh, by council meeting.
Wow.
And they are almost all done in time for the impending doom, snowstorm that's about to happen. So we still have a few in the park, I think, but, um, other than that, picking a lot of trash. Trash tends to show up really bad in the winter when all the leaves disappear. And so we're focusing on that, keeping the city look good. Um, we are focusing on potholes. It's obviously pothole season, so do a lot of that. End of report.
Welcome to, uh, Northeast Ohio. I know it's a little bit different from the Columbus area in terms of the snow we get. So he knows how to deal with it, but he doesn't, you just don't know when it's coming. Welcome to, uh, Northeast Ohio, my friend.
Yeah, it's hard to predict.
Yeah, we all know that. We've lived here a while. Mr. Jalati.
Sure, thanks, mayor. Uh, thanks to council for passage of resolutions numbers three, five, and six tonight. We appreciate that. Uh, we've already talked about roads, uh, enough here tonight, so no further report.
Thank you. Director Chad.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, first off, congratulations and welcome back to PRC, Council President Brandt. We're excited to have you back again. I think we've made a lot of great progress in these two and a, two and a half years together. It's been, it's been that much time already. So we look forward to that meeting next week. Uh, as the mayor already alluded to, Winter Fest was a huge success. We learned a lot, had tons of people through the, the park area. Uh, and I want to really extend our gratitude towards the Service Department and the, my fellow coworkers in the Parks and Rec Department. I think the work that they put in, and I don't want to say just for that week, the work they put in the whole holiday season was tremendous between some snow that came through, getting the lights up, making sure the event was festive for everybody. So thank you for that. Fire Department, Police Department, thanks for being out there and supporting. Um, Fire Department did an awesome job of, uh, getting us, getting us some cool attractions, a little carriage ride and getting the horses there and navigating horses through a crowd and, uh, also getting, uh, getting Santa there safely. So thank you for that. Uh, 2022 was a great year for us, uh, within programs and revenue for the facility. Uh, the MAC Rec had its highest revenue total ever. So that was a huge, uh, thing for us to accomplish. Uh, program participation was its highest ever. So 2022 was very successful. Um, now as we head into 2023, I'm excited to say all of our flooring project is finally done. So that all happened as we closed out November, uh, into early December. The front desk will be here sometime in 2023, and I'm only saying that semi sarcastically because it was supposed to be here the week of Christmas, then it was supposed to be here a week ago, then it was the 15th, and now it's the 31st. So 31st of January, we might have our permanent front desk in. So just keep, uh, playing the guessing game as you walk in the doors. Um, we also are awaiting, uh, late January for the men's lockers to come in. The men's locker room is getting brand-new lockers that will mimic what is in the women's locker room already. They're more conducive to an aquatic environment. Uh, we anticipate those , uh, coming in actually within the next two weeks. Um, and then our lap pool heater got installed a couple of weeks ago, so that's all up and running properly. And we are currently trying to get ourselves into the new modern era of chemical automation units being put into the facility to replace our 23-year-old units. And these will all run off of our computers to control the pool chemicals. So it'll be a fantastic adventure for us to move forward. Um, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. The newly rehired Director Vares.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. Just wanted to, again, thank council for the, uh, passage of ordinance four dash 2023. I've really enjoyed the four years I've been here so far and can't believe it's been four already, but, uh, looking forward to, what do you think, mayor, at least four more?
Minimum?
Okay.
End of my report. Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Um, I'd like to welcome John back. I'm glad I don't have to train a new finance director. Um, the Fire Department had a very busy year. We had another record year for calls, um, with district-wide 4,441 calls. About 54% of those were located within the city. Um, the other were split, split between the two townships. Um, we also had a record year for EMS collections. Between us and the two townships, we share those funds. Um, and I have to talk about hospital wait times. Um, years ago, when an ambulance took someone to the hospital, they got in right away. Um, uh, we have squads now waiting at some local ERs for two hours for a bed. And that's because those patients require a bed and a monitor. If you don't, ambulances, ours included, are delivering patients at times to the waiting room in the emergency department. Um, there's been news, stories, um, where people in the lobby are, in the waiting room of emergency departments are calling 911. So it, it's going on throughout Northeast Ohio. It's the co- resurgence of COVID. It's flu season. Um, my thing is just don't think because you're calling us that you're going to get in any quicker. You're not. Um, hospitals are slammed. They're doing the best they can. And we are very fortunate because we can go north, we can go south. Um, so we have a lot of facilities we can take you to and we can find the best one that's going to get you in. If it is a true life or death emergency, there are beds for that and, you know, no one's going to die over this. But the hospitals are slammed, so if you have to go to the emergency department, please be very patient. Other than that, end of report. Oh, wait. The squad that you guys may remember ordering back in September of 2021, um, they may start building it next month. So we're looking for delivery maybe in May. End of report.
Is that going to be a little bit better ride than the ones I've been traveling in?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Hope you don't have to travel in.
We need to get you to the rec so you travel in the west.
Chief Gold.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, the Police Department's looking, uh, to hire several officers. Uh, we have two openings in, uh, in our ranks. Um, we should have those if everything goes well around the end of the month. And we're also looking to hire an SRO. And if that goes well, they should be around the same time towards the end of the month. So we may have a permanent SRO at the high school by the end of the month. Keep your fingers crossed. That's all I have, mayor.
Well, I'm going to add to your report because this is your second last meeting. And if anyone wants to wish you well in our, our next meeting, we will have a proper send-off for you and, uh, you can step into your boat and push you out into the water and you can go have your fun. So...
You're going to arrest them?
No, you can go fishing, whatever you want to do out in the water.
Yeah.
All right. Director Smith.
Thank you, mayor. Um, HR's been busy ending our, our year and then getting open enrollment going and a lot of end-of-year reports. Um, as I had, uh, presented at a staff meeting yesterday, the BWC has announced a new safety initiative grant of $40,000. I'll be working with service, fire, and police to see which department needs and, um, to, uh, write the grant and see what we can get. It's a three-to-one grant, so, uh, BWC pays 75%, we pay 25. So we're going to look and taking advantage of that this year and, um, see what we, see what we can do to help the city. End of report, mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodick.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, 2022 ended with the building department issuing 900 permits. Uh, like two thirds of those were residential-oriented and registering, uh, a little over 500 contractors. Total revenue between permitting and contract registrations came out to be just over $300,000. And the second item that I have is just to let people know that, uh, Spruce Hill Crossings will begin construction in Phase Four improvements and in new home construction in Phase Three, uh, in sometime in, uh, in early February. Uh, for those that don't know, Ryan Holmes had purchased 26 of the 36 lots and, uh, they will be building out the entire, uh, Phase Three. Uh, Chris Coburns maintains the last 10 lots and those are located in Phase Four. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Director Collins.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, major projects in the IT department, um, getting the final MDT set up, so we have all the MDT swapped out from police cars, uh, ready for the new vehicles whenever they're ready for those. Uh, we, I've, uh, swapped out half of the, um, tablets for the service department. Wanted to get the other half of them done today, but unfortunately Verizon's, uh, upgrade system was not behaving and I couldn't push through any changes. So I had to wait on those, unfortunately. And then, uh, setting up a new desk down here in Mayor's Court for Vinnie. Uh, thank you, mayor. End of report.
Thank you. Director Ghadetti.
I'd just like to say congratulations to, uh, Mr. Vares. If Mr. Hoover could know for the record, that would be effective January 1st, um, 2023. I'd appreciate that. Um, I think everybody really does appreciate his skill, knowledge, and expertise.
February 1st.
February 1st, 2023. Um, but I certainly appreciate his skill, knowledge, and expertise he brings to the, uh, position. Look forward to working with him. That's all I have, sir.
The Tiff man. T-I-F-F man.
Good tip, man.
The tip of genius. Any unfinished business? Any new business?
Uh, your honor, uh, I, I would like to bring up two things here. First of all, there's an MLK Day celebration and program this Sunday, January 15th at 5:00 PM at Nerdonia High School Auditorium. The guest speaker is Pastor, uh, Chip Fried of Garfield Memorial Church, and he will be accompanied by performances from Nerdonia Hills students. I think that would, uh, is something the community should attend or as, if they can, and have that interest and, uh, show our support. Next, I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to, uh, RC-121.22.
I have, I'm...
I'm sorry.
...that motion and...
Oh.
And I've had stuff to say.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Are you, can you rescind that, sir?
Can you rescind? He never made it. He never made it.
Never mind.
He never got there.
Then you're good.
Yeah.
No worries.
I just want to wish, uh, everyone a happy new year and welcome back and, and, you know, welcome back to all the people that has been rehired in the new year. Glad to see everyone. And thank you very much, council, for putting your trust in me and electing me president and Parks and Rec, uh, this year. And I also want to, uh, thank the Fire Department for an amazing standout program again, once again this year. It was great. I was really honored to be a part of it. I know Mr. Garvis was a part of it and I think, did you, uh, have time to do that this year, Vinnie?
I did not.
The standout program. And then also, you know, uh, shout out to everyone that worked so hard to get it done and that worked so hard on the nights that we do it and especially to Sherri Kuzma who does a lot of work, uh, thankless work there in, in the, the Fire Department. And that is all I have to say on that. Does anyone else have any other new business before I make a motion? All right. I would like to make...
I apologize.
You started rolling with those motions, I'm like...
You're rolling.
Yeah. You're like, I'm the motion guy today. Anyway, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to RC-121 dot 22, uh, G4 for the preparation for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
If it's okay with, uh, Consular Ventura, I will second that. Roll call?
Ms. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Gravis.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura.
Yes.
We will, uh, go into, uh, executive session. We come out, we're likely to be complete for the evening, so you guys don't have to wait.
No more to see here. No more to see here.
Yes.